Roll call please.
I'm Barker.
Here.
Now.
Here.
Snack timer. Neville?
Yes.
Tom Bush?
Here.
Brett Meister?
Here.
Joyce did contact me this afternoon. She wasn't gonna be able to make it. Uh, I guess Jerry's been in the hospital since Sunday. Um, so let's keep Jerry and Joyce on our thoughts and prayers if we could. First, the public comments on the agenda items? And the committee reports, please.
I have nothing right now. Everything's going pretty good.
Okay. Water and sewer?
Um, I have several things. Uh, we did not have a meeting, but I should have several things. I had an EPA inspection last Thursday, our water plant, and not got a report back from them on concerns and stuff that they want to see changed, but I do have some preliminary stuff. I gave you each a copy of a demand, sample demand letter that was sent to me today. They're now gonna require us to monthly sample nitrates out of well four, well five, and our finished water. And they're also suggesting that, that, uh, the city purchase a test kit to do in-house testing as well as lab testing for.
For nitrates?
Yes. I've priced that stuff and we can get into that for a couple hundred dollars. It's not terribly expensive. Um, obviously, I'm sure everybody knows that we're in the oil or do some sample issues that are been ongoing for several months now. I've been in close contact with EPA daily. They're scratching their head at the same time I am. You know, basically over the same thing. And, uh, I spoke with Andrew briefly on his phone this morning and, uh, we come to the conclusion, I think, I'm gonna do a little research and see if I can't find a different lab. If nothing else, just to, uh, do a little comparison shopping.
Hey Matt, do they have a certification on our test equipment? They have to certify that stuff. Can you ask for their certification on the test equipment?
From PDC?
Yeah, who's doing testing, yes.
I can ask for that, yes. And yes, they, they have to be certified lab to report to EPA.
I mean, everything's gotta be calibrated every so often, so I do know that. Make sure that they're doing that, if you would please.
Correct.
Uh, a little tidbit, day to day, from Seth Goodwin saying that whenever he has real water tested, it usually fails every time through PDC. I don't know what that means, but if we're having trouble.
Well, I can explain that for you a little bit. Real water's not chlorinated.
No, no, I'm saying, I'm saying if, if, if he's having issue with that in all of his wells, I understand, I understand the difference between city water and real water.
Oh, okay.
I'm s- I'm wondering if there isn't an issue with the lab, like you said.
Well, I, I kinda feel that way because, I'll give you just a short synopsis. When I take a, a sample out of all four wells individually last Friday and the results come back as a failure on all four, but then I re- reclaim them samples to repeat those on Monday and they all pass. I really find it hard to believe that that changed that much in two days. And I could, I could take part of the blame myself as operator error. But four in a row, that's pretty tough to do. You'd almost have to try to do that. So, no, I agree. So that's where I'm at with that. If you guys are fine with me researching different laboratory.
I would say if it's under, I mean, we pay five hundred bucks a month to PDC or whatever, if it's like under five hundred bucks to get a comparison sample, I think it's just go ahead.
Okay, good then. Last meeting, I, I made mention that I drafted and sent a letter to the Canadian National Railroad and referring some documentation that they're asking for us. I did get a response from them and she sent me a whole bunch of different files that I've been sorting through. I've targeted three that I think is in the area. And she's gonna, so she says pull those and send me copies of those. I have not seen them to this date yet. But to me, that, that's a win that they actually responded to me in a timely fashion. That, that's a win in my book.
Right.
So, my honest opinion is that they want us to put a whole new case in there. That's my honest opinion. Now whether we give the approval to use the existing or not, does the battle we're fighting. So, that's for that side. Also, in each one of your mailboxes, this going to streets and alleys, if you don't mind, I jump ahead.
Yeah, it's fine. We're done with water and sewer. Does anyone have any other questions about water and sewer?
Uh, the only thing I'd like to bring up is the, the new meters. Uh, about a year ago, we started testing some new meters. We've fully integrated them into the billing system as of last month and we're gonna go ahead and go forward with those. So, just wanted to share that.
Is that what the?
Yep. So that was.
The beacon things, yeah.
Yeah, so we were on a trial.
The many of installers, was it like, what was it?
Initially, we got.
Do we need to start with?
I think we got twenty in the service. Now we have some endpoints that are working off of census meters that we had previously in stock. We just reprogrammed those to, to, uh, send out data the way we wanna receive it.
And the biggest advantages of them are you can track your daily usage, right?
Yes. You can go hour by hour if you want to.
Was there anything else specific that it, were they capable, are they radio read capable?
All of them are on the cell network, so, so you go ahead and drive around. I think the biggest advantage is the, the user can see their own usage.
Oh, absolutely.
Uh, right now, we, we put the new meter in the grade school. They're leaking ten gallons an hour and they have been for the last month. And I don't think they do it. That was, that's the kinda stuff that you can see.
Good. Good. Anything else on water and sewer? Matt, jump right in if you want.
Um, also, I put in your mailbox a memo that was sent to me from Justin with the Farnsworth Group on our bid opening for our motor fuel tax program. And he and I are both under the understanding and agreement that those bids were insanely high. Um, the numbers we were fully expecting to see for the project that we had determined was in the thirty-three to thirty-five, thirty-eight thousand dollar range and we're sh- the lowest one we had was sixty-one thousand dollars. So, that being said, it's my opinion and also Farnsworth Group, Justin's opinion, that the council move forward and, and, uh, don't accept any of those bids. And as you can read in there, uh, basically what we're, we'd like to outline and do to kinda shift that work to next year, but piggybacking off that, let's go get some crack ceiling done this year. Take some of that funds, get some bids out there, get some crack ceiling done before winter time. To make it, to, to be our, consider our work for our MFT for, for the year.
And that's out, that's out for bid, right?
Yes, it is.
So the, the, the one that we won't accept any bids on, that was the fixing the, uh, the voids under the streets around, uh, we drive the square and once by the grade school.
Yeah, that was, yeah, that was the one that we was targeting, yes.
Can we do like a subset of those or is, like I said, during the whole sixty-one thousand, we just do like, say the one by the grade school?
I will inquire. Now we're scaling down the project.
Yeah.
You know, I would, I wouldn't think that'd cause any, any problems with the state 'cause it's, it's in our MFT that was approved. You know, so we can do that work. It's been approved to be done. It's just depending on the scope of it. Would you see it that way too?
Yeah, if we can get a reasonable price on that too. If it's gonna be.
Well, a lot of the problem I think that we had, I'm not trying to blame this on the Farnsworth Group, it's my opinion, is if you'll notice, every contractor was forever away from here. The closest one was in Raymond. I mean, of course, and there was one from Peoria, which I'm not saying is terribly far away, but far enough for a contractor to, you know, why aren't we looking at dumb company indicators?
Can we make sure that the, the seal coating is still out for bid? Can we make sure that those companies that are closer are getting bid prices?
That's what I recommended. I says, I don't know why we're not getting sent out to our locals.
Can you make sure of that?
I will do that. That's what I have.
And also, you know, so if it's certain things, like if it was too high, can we like, like, uh, item seven, the combination curve and gutter remover and replacement? We had in there to, um, I'm guessing that, you know, measurement is linear foot, to do fifty foot of that. Now, if we can't do the frame open lid stuff, you know, the, that's the one that's been the highest. That's like the ten to fifteen thousand dollars. Combination cutter, curb and gutter removal and replacement was bid at about thirty-five to, went from thirty-five anywhere from sixty to fifty. Is there any way we can take just one item number and complete it?
Where was, where was the thirty-five hundred?
Uh.
You're looking at the S.
That's ours, yeah. So it came in at forty-two, forty-two fifty.
Right.
One of them came in under twenty-eight hundred, one of them came in at sixty-two fifty.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
No, if it, no, but I'm guessing these, these companies aren't gonna come in and do just fifty linear foot of curb replacement for that amount of money. It's more about getting mobilized for a bigger job.
To me, that, that's a lot of cost that they're probably not showing as a line item.
Right. Mobilization of it.
And as, we all know it's an expenditure, no doubt.
Right.
The one that's really the most alarming to me is if you look here, like say, the first bidder out of East Peoria, go under line nine, traffic control and protection. There it is. They got their three thousand dollars. The next two are twelve thousand and twelve thousand four hundred dollars. I mean, that, that's a pretty good gap there. I don't quite understand what that gap is for. Maybe they're, maybe they're building their mobilization into that.
Well, what's the, what's the unit of measurement there? LSUM, what's that mean?
Well, something.
LMS.
Kenyans sides are pretty notorious for having large amounts of traffic control. They're the guys that if you see them out on the highway, they've got ten or fifteen miles barricades up, lots of people. You don't need to have.
So we can start the barricades at Lincoln?
Start barricading, I have a ton of kids who want to. Can they love it? I just wonder if that's not why they're, a lot of labor, 'cause they're, although it should be, I guess, 'cause they put them on, they don't take it down for, 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 for it.
So, to move forward with this, you know, I, I'd hate to go a year, I'd hate to go a second year in a row without spending any motor fuel tax money. We need to get, we need to figure out how we can get some of this stuff done.
I agree with you. Well, that's where we was gonna re-channel some more, some extra funds there for, for a larger scope of, of.
Seal coating.
Well, seal coating, crack ceiling, whichever way you wanna call it.
Right, okay, yeah.
We were gonna broaden that scope out a little bit. Instead of doing an area this big, let, let's shoot for an area this big. To try to absorb some of that. That's what basically we're saying.
Okay, we'll just continue to work on that then, I guess.
What level of a safety thing are we talking about in these holes though? I mean, obviously, the grade schools are a priority, I would hope. The ones uptown aren't great. On that. Just letting them go isn't gonna fix it. I mean, it's gonna get worse. It's gonna get even more expensive.
No, it's gonna get even worse. I don't know if it'll get any more expensive, but it's just gonna keep getting worse and then it will be a hazard for sure.
But at some point, there's gonna be a monetary value benefit first. If it's eating, if it's eating sub base away and creating, it's gonna get worse over time.
I guess that's true. Anything else on streets and alleys? Okay, finance? Any report other than the?
Other than the deposits, we got, uh, real estate taxes. We have a nice chunk of a hundred and sixteen thousand that we got in the last two weeks.
The gaming was down.
Yeah, it's down a little bit.
The sales tax was up.
Business taxes are about the same.
Business taxes are about the same. Okay. Any questions for the finance committee or Tricia or anyone? Okay, is there any public comments on the non-agenda items? Moving on to the approval of consent agenda, which, which includes, uh, only the approval of the bills.
Kay, you have it. One thousand five hundred dollars. Ultrafer, five hundred four dollars. IND, two thousand one hundred twelve dollars, twelve cents. Midwest Meter, four thousand. And Water Solutions Unlimited, one thousand three hundred seventy-four dollars, thirty-five cents.
Any questions on claims and counts? Now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
So, Aaron?
I'll second that.
All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, motion passes. On a new business, uh, I put these, I put these two on there. It's come to my attention that the accountants were configuring some of the payrolls and have found a discrepancy or, or asking clarification on how the overtime process works. What, what happened was what they, they paid the overtime different from what we have in the past, so, and stop me anytime, Matt, if I'm getting it wrong, but basically what happens, I know I've talked to a couple of you about it, I have talked to all of you about it. Basically what's happening is if, if an employee takes time off during the week and then, and then works anytime over, like on a weekend or late or past the eight hours in one night, since they're not physically there, physically at work for forty hours, then they, then they are not, we're not required by law to give them overtime however they are. A good example would be if you took, it, it, that includes any time, paid time off, holidays, anything like that. So, say you take a vacation day on Monday and then you sho- and then you work Tuesday to Friday, you have thirty-two hours of, of regular time and eight hours of paid time off. There's a water main break, you come in on Saturday. The, our accountants were saying that that normally is not paid out in overtime because you were only actually at work for thirty-two hours. We need to make clarification and decide as a council how to do this. This is obviously a policy change. That way we can get in the employee manual about how we wanna handle it. What's everybody's thoughts, first off? Is, and is there any questions about exactly what's going on with it and how it's, how it's working? Does everybody understand what I was saying? Did I clarify that enough or? The way we've always done it in the past is it did, you didn't ha- have to physically work the forty. You just have to have for, have to have forty on the books, whether it be regular time at work or paid time off, and you would receive that, that time and a half pay for anything over forty. Talking with the attorney, we are not required to pay overtime for any, if they do not physically regularly work forty hours in seven consecutive days.
If, if I schedule a vacation for all week and then I have to work on a Saturday, but I don't get overtime for it, that would suck.
Takes a lot of incentive and then an overtime, they're not getting paid for it, so.
So I think if it's scheduled ahead of time, such as you have vacation planned or something like that, that we should pay overtime. So that would be conflicting with, or in addition to what.
Be different, be different if you called in sick all week and then got overtime on it.
So I do think that if it's sick time or, or something like that, not, not so much.
Yeah, Matt.
I can tell you, Val, I treat it when it comes to the approval process. Obviously, I approve the overtime for my departments. If a person calls in sick and they have time on the books, they're still gonna get paid. But it's gonna be considered a paid, unexcused absence. Okay, now then, if, if Tony's working for me and he's scheduled Friday off, even though he put it as PTO 'cause he's got a doctor's appointments to go to that day, he schedules it on a Tuesday, that's approved time. He has the time on the books, it's approved and should count toward time worked. The only thing that, that to me is not, is if Tony there again calls me at five o'clock in the morning, Matt, hey, I'm sick, I'm not making it in today. First thing that goes through my mind is, okay, I know he's got time on the books, well, he's gonna get paid for his time off, but if overtime arises, it's not gonna be paid to him on that particular day. And that's how I treated it with my crew entire time. And they know that.
There's nothing in there about, I searched. You, I mean, you, you're one of the, welcome to the.
My question is, is what are, what's our vacation? So say they get two weeks of vacation a year, or whatever it is. Is there a separation between vacation time and like a sick day or anything else? Is that sick day paid?
Mm-hmm. If you have the time on the books.
So if they're using a vacation day for a sick day or there, or do we have, that's, a lot of places separate that now.
Well, they generally, well, when you're looking at handbook, it'll say formerly known as sick time, PTO, personal time off.
That's fine. So, so out of, so they have what, six days a year or something for sick time, whatever it is?
Twelve, one day a month.
Twelve, okay. So that time being, to me, is scheduled time. That, you're, that's part of your compensation. You have this amount of time to take care of the doctor visits, have a sick day, whatever. So, like I told Matt, whatever time you have that year, say I have two weeks of vacation time and I have twelve days of, of, of sick time, PTO time, I can put it. Outside of that scope is where you start saying, no, you're not getting paid overtime. Because it's outside of the compensation that we were, you agreed on when you hired him. So, say Monday, I call in sick, I go to the doctor, whatever, I work Tuesday to Friday, something comes up on Saturday, it's still overtime to me. That's just, that's my take on it. So whether or not it's sick time or a vacation time that is planned ahead, you know what I mean? You do have things that come up.
No, I'm a realist. I, I understand life now. It's just the way it works.
So, to me, if it's part of your compensation, I, I consider that a part of your compensation.
I, and I agree. I consider it part of your compensation, but I don't, I don't consider it part of hours work. I mean, that's not time worked. So if you take a week's vacation and you have forty hours paid and you did not have to be at work all week, and you worked three hours on Saturday, since you have not had to work all week, you think you deserve a time and a half?
I do.
Okay. I mean, obviously, let's get the opinions out there and you guys get the opinions.
All I'm saying is that, because that's, that's part, we are paying you fifty-two weeks a year, whether you're here or not, for those two weeks of vacation or whatever you have in the year. We are saying, we are giving you this money, so you will stay with us, basically.
Right.
Okay, so same thing, like, like I said, it's, it's hard to get confused about working through the middle of the night if you're, you know, wasting water or whatever it is. When you're getting straight time, even though that's, to me, that's just, I'm just saying that as my personal. I just consider that time that's, you know, that's part of your, your deal, I guess.
I've seen places where they allow you six, uh, sick days, and then if you don't use them for sick days by the end of the year, you can use them as vacation days.
Right.
So that's a, that's a separate topic that we've been discussing.
But you know, the thing that's perplexing about this, it, it really is to me, is that we had this very subject come up essentially with them and they, like through the Fourth of July. I, I don't understand why Havitz all of a sudden decided to change after they'd already been paying out like they were, like Crystal was doing or Colleen was before her. Then all of a sudden, this pay period, they decided they wanna change something. That, that doesn't make any sense to this guy. I mean, why all of a sudden, or was it just an oversight on theirs from?
I don't think it was oversight on Colleen or Crystal. I think that if you told them, or, or Mike told them that there was this much overtime they paid, that they didn't question about whether the hours were worked or whether the time was paid off towards the forty. They just saw on the sheet that was turned in, they wrote overtime. I mean, I, I don't think that Crystal considered whether or not anything over forty was actually worked or time off. You know, it just, there was forty hours. Was it worked? Was it time off? Doesn't matter. She, she sees the overtime, she pays it.
You put holiday pay in there.
That's when, no, that's when they cash it.
So you have two days a week that you're out. That's not work, but it's part of your, it's part of your compensation, I think. That's what I'm saying. You got, there's a lot of blurred lines you can do if you wanna start nitpicking it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but, 'cause, exactly. I mean, Christmas and Eve and Christmas Day, that's the two that I always use. For example, that's two in a row that you're out here. So you're, you're sixteen hours short.
Right.
Well, there comes a snowstorm the next day and you're out around the clock. For straight time? Now that's, you know, to most people, they're like, hmm, I didn't see that phone ring, you know? Now, I'm not particularly that way, but that's me.
I think you gotta define your time off, is it considered time worked first? That's how we do it where I work. We have personal holidays, that's considered time worked. If you have considered time worked, you get paid for that. If it is not, you don't get paid for it. I think that's something we need to define, is your PTO considered time worked as you get paid for it? You know, your vacation, is it considered time worked? That's something we'll have to decide. Then that, that will give you a definition of how, which way you can go.
That's a clear cut way to do it, but you're exactly right.
So can we divide it out?
I think now's the best time. This, this is just a, you know, this is an employee manual change, this is entirely up to the city council. So, it's all, so it's what you guys decide to do and what policy you, you need to decide to make happening going forward. Aaron, you always get to start for something.
Well, uh, say we got sick time. Uh, do you have personal time too, or is it just sick time?
Same, same.
Okay, so you got sick time and you got vacation?
Holiday.
Well, holidays count too.
Holidays would be considered time work to me, because that's.
I think at, at the most, you know, vacation.
Vacation time is time worked?
Holidays. Just holidays.
So let's start with one, holidays. Does everybody think that that's time worked?
I'm okay with holidays.
I'm good with that, yes.
All right. Vacation time. Does everybody think that that is time worked?
I would say, my personal opinion is yes, because you have earned that.
I, I agree with that.
I agree. I mean, some of the people brought up that if you take forty hour vacation and then you get called in Saturday, I would consider.
That's a real easy week to say no.
Yeah.
That's really, that's my vacation week.
All right, so the only thing. On the other, on the other hand, be careful because there are certain instances that you know you're gonna work the weekends and you can abuse that.
Yeah.
You could take Friday afternoon off knowing you're not gonna get paid, just, you know, hey, something come up, I don't wanna use it in my vacation, I don't wanna use any of my paid time off, that's fine. It, it happens to be the weekend of when we put the flags up on Sunday. I'm not saying that you guys would do that, but it's available, it's available to, to twist it and make that work to your advantage. If you know you're gonna be working all day Saturday and all day Sunday, then you don't show up on Friday and you still make a fair chunk of money.
But they're using a vacation day.
Yeah, but it's, but it's going towards their forty.
You're using a vacation day.
I think if you're using a vacation day and it's prior to, and it's not called off, it should be okay.
Okay.
That's, well, it's up to supervisor.
Right. Okay. And that is fair. That way everybody knows upfront.
I agree. So the only thing still to question is the, let's just say, sick time is. I'm, I'm of the opinion that that should not be considered paid time, but what do you guys think? Or?
The way I, we have a, everywhere I've worked, if you had sick time, it was time you accrued it somewhere or another. But like, we don't do it this way. We don't have any PTO time. We just have whatever vacation days we've got.
Yeah.
But like when I worked at FS, you accrued a half day a month, so you had six extra days a week or a, a year. To me, that is still, hey, you've been here, you put your time in, we're gonna let you have this half day in case you have, you know what I mean, is.
I would like to give some background information on our sick days. So they started off, well, long before any of us were here, as we gave a day a month, and then at the end of the year, if you didn't use them, they counted as a benefit towards your retirement when you retired. So, uh, they would build up a huge amount of sick time and then they would cap towards their retirement. Later on, still before us, they stopped that accruing and now, uh, sick time is not like that anymore. So we get twelve.
It doesn't roll?
It doesn't roll, so we get twelve.
It's a, it's, yeah, good.
Okay. Roll, it rolls, but it, it doesn't have the same purpose as what it did. So now it's almost like there's no distinguishing that between vacation times. And we get more sick days than we get vacation days. And there's, I think in order for there to be an incentive not to abuse that, there has to be something that that's not just as good as a vacation day.
Yeah, because if you're set up to do a job, as Mike calls off, that's putting a, putting a hammer on everybody else. What's the, you shouldn't get.
So where do you, where do you define the, the, uh, I agree with it. Where, where do we define a call off then? Twenty-four hours are advanced, sick days advanced.
I was gonna say.
Obviously, the morning of is, is gonna be a.
You could, you could abuse it that way too. If you wanted to make sure you got your overtime for that Saturday or Sunday, you'd be like, hey, make, just make sure I use a vacation day there and not a paid time off and not a sick day, not a paid time off day.
Yeah, I mean, if they're gonna abuse the system though, this is something you gotta look at. They've only got so many vacation days. So they can only, they, they can only do it so many times.
Yeah, but they accumulate PTO for a long time and, and have to roll over.
But vacation, they have to use a vacation day to get paid for it, not PTO time.
Yes. Yes.
So vacay, you're in PTO. You want to get paid time off.
So that, that would be determined from using a sick day, is it?
Correct. Is it vacation day?
Where is injury on the job?
Off, I mean, like, saying, saying, um, say you've got something planned Friday. You know, you're gonna be working overtime Saturday. Uh, whatever employee knows Monday that that's gonna happen, he's got something to do Friday. He waits till Friday morning to call you and says, uh, I'm sick. When he did, he, when he said, hey, we're gonna, when he said on Monday morning, we're gonna do this on Friday, he can say, hey, I, I need that day off, blah, blah, blah. Use a vacation day versus a sick day. So we're saying, sick days do not apply towards the time. So we're saying sick days do not apply towards the time a vacation day would. So what he's gonna do is instead of burning a vacation day, that he will run out of. He will use a sick day, he will not get any credit for it, get paid for it, but he won't get credit towards this overtime.
Those hours won't count towards hours worked.
Those hours, that sick day will not count as work ti- time worked, so that he would be able to get overtime on Saturday then.
Which is how you're doing it now, right?
Pretty much.
Cause like I said, that comes through the supervisor, has to approve that. And I can tell you countless times where I'm not gonna name any names, cause that's not nice to do, but I can tell you countless times when the employee logged their overtime to me. And then over here, we got sick. And it's, oh, well, sick, okay, so I'm subtracting that off of this because that is not approved time in my eyes. But to me, it's, like I said, it's the call in thing, because if if I know I got a doctor's appointment on Thursday. I'm obviously not gonna use vacation time for a doctor's appointment, that's what I got personal time for.
That's fine, but then it won't count toward you.
But you accrued it.
That's what I was trying to do earlier too, but but I'm saying, I mean, we have to draw a line somewhere, so. Either you say all of your time during the year, your your week of vacation and your twelve days off, all time worked, or we have to put a line there. Essentially.
To me, it goes back to the notification process, but.
That's what I was saying. If if he lets you know Monday morning, hey, I do have a, I have to take whatever day off or or what afternoon off, I don't know, do we break that down? Half days or is it by the hour or is it a full day?
In increments of half, yeah.
Okay. So if he lets you know Monday. Basically, that's what I'm saying, we have to draw a line somewhere where where sick time, where uh in in excused paid time off starts. Is that twenty-four hours notice? Is it seventy-two hours notice? Obviously, the morning of, we're pretty well clear on is it.
That's a no brainer.
Call off. That should not be put.
Well, you shouldn't be, I mean, most. I don't know where that, if if you're going to the doctor, chances are you probably know more than twenty-four hours in advance.
Exactly.
Nine times out of ten, unless it's an emergency, you need to go somewhere other than the doctor.
Can't get into my doctor for like three months, so.
Well, a lot of doctors like it, I agree. So I mean, you know it well enough in advance. Now, I will, I'm not gonna say that that is always that way because, you know. I could wake up tomorrow with a tooth swelled this big and I gotta go get that thing taken out of there, you know, that can happen.
That's where we draw the line that says, hey, you can know that it just happened overnight, you didn't let me know until in the morning, so it doesn't count towards your overtime.
Doesn't affect me much, so. But I mean, we need clarification, obviously, from this is the way we're gonna.
It got it got brought up because there's an issue, we're addressing it, I mean.
Pardon?
Yeah. I said it got brought up because there was an issue, that's why we're addressing it, we're just making sure we're all on the same page. If anyone wanted to know what it says in the manual, it says employees will be compensated for overtime hours worked. Overtime for regular city employees is more than forty hours per week or hours worked on a holiday. It does not say more than forty hours per week, whether that be hours actually worked, paid time off, vacation, it doesn't say that, so that's where we need to be.
So for the handbook, you're giving an extra, your the vacation time paid as also?
We'd have to reword it in a certain way. I would probably give that to Jordan to rewrite rewrite in some way.
So our sick days considered time worked?
I, you know, I like, I I kinda, the way, from what your guys' opinions is, is that it should probably count towards our hours worked, vacation. I think we might as well stay with the system. We got it where Matt clarifies whether it's unexcused paid time off or excused paid time off. And makes it a overtime hours supporting. It seems, it's, you know, it seems that he's that he's up to date on if you call in sick Friday and you have to work on Saturday, you're not getting overtime, correct?
I watch that closer than you think.
I would imagine you would.
Cause for one, not just because I don't wanna cheat the city, obviously, I don't wanna cheat an employee either. So it's part of my job to, to watch that like a hawk and make sure that it's it's correct as correct can be when it's turned in.
And that's why I said my my opinion is, is that time, that sick time is is time we give an employee for being here, basically.
You earned it.
All of that mine is earned time to me, so, but. I would pay, I would have all that time as overtime, but you have to have a line somewhere, so I'm.
Well, no, I mean, it's just like me, I got, what, if you consider my, I got like three hundred and sixty hours of personal time. Obviously, you can tell I don't take much of it, I don't use much of it. You know, and I look at it more so what Andrew said, you know, I'm looking forward to bankrolling to retirement. But I think it cuts off at five hundred hours, I believe is what it says. And then it doesn't grow anymore. Didn't used to have a cap, it does now. I mean, I don't have my handbook right in front of me, otherwise I would, but five hundred and some hours sounds normal to me, sounds right, I read that. So you need to change the handbook or just let Abbott know what the plan is?
We probably don't need to change the handbook.
Yes. Max out of a certain number, I think it's five hundred and seventy-two hours if I'm not mistaken, five hundred and some hours.
For what?
Sick personal time, pretty maximum.
A hundred, my maximum is a hundred and fifty-six days.
So a hundred and fifty-six days times eight, eight hours per day. That's a lot.
My my mental calculator's not working, but my phone.
So essentially, what we need to do is let Abbott's to pay as Matt says, as he's fit. Twelve hundred and forty.
No, if there's a problem, then we can find a new accountant.
Right.
Let's not forget that they work for us, guys, I mean.
So eight hours in a day.
Well, really, all Abbott needs to know is if it's marked as overtime, he's already approved it.
Yeah, right, yes.
You agree with that, Matt? I said, I said, we'll just leave it all on you and if there's a problem, we'll take out your bag.
No. I watch it pretty close, I'm not not too worried about it.
Is everybody on board with that then? Okay, okay. Moving on. Tony, is there very much overtime in your department because your overtime is different? I didn't think so, okay. Yours is uh on a, yours is more than eighty and up and up two week pay, but not more than forty a week, did you know that? I didn't know that until I saw it in there, but it doesn't come up.
It doesn't, no, I mean, with overtime, it's, I'm actually not available overtime, so.
I have that feeling.
Okay, moving on, uh miscellaneous, the annual audit will take place uh October fifteenth through seventeenth, I believe. That firm from Springfield is doing it again. Crystal will be helping out since she was there for part of the fiscal year and of course Abbott's. I don't think they'll need Abbott's for much, though, it'll be mainly questions for Crystal. Any questions on that or? They will probably present the audit, which Mike says is the same presentation for the last thirty years. The same words are spoken, they will probably present that sometime in November. Any other miscellaneous business?
A comment about the recycling, so we still have the two six yard dumpsters down there. Has anybody noticed that they're overflowing or they're not able to keep up?
Are we supposed to get a third six yard dumpster? Yes, did they take the big one away?
Yes.
Is it, was that set up to where we're supposed to call them when it's full?
No, the the six yards were supposed to be emptied every other week.
Every other week?
So, but I'm wondering like if if we've had two now for, even though we're supposed to have three for the last month, basically. If two is keeping up, do we need a third one?
I've been down a couple of times in the last few weeks, it's it's been over half full, but it's been, it's been raining. Okay, but I have a number for the last two weeks.
The other thing is, uh I know it's confusing to a lot of people, they're, don't know where to put the paper, it all goes in. Either the dumpsters now is single stream, so I think we're gonna try to look into having a sign made that explains single stream recycling, everything goes in.
Yeah, and everything goes in there.
Yeah, I think we get like four calls a week, probably.
A lot of people throw up, see that big one going, they break out, you know?
Oh, and uh on our dumpster, if you could take a can of spray paint down there, if there's no glass or something and no paper, just spray paint.
Can do that, it's no other.
Just beware of how well signed it, you don't work, so you know. If you go out to the sewer pond right now. We have, we moved our burn pile back further off because the crop was still out, fall harvest dry, I don't wanna be buying no popcorn. Cause we let something on fire. So we put a sign there, brush with an arrow pointing to a ginormous pile over there. And people still dump it right there. So.
Be a light, be a light on there.
Get an airboard somewhere.
Just something for someone to hit with a ball bat or a car. Um but uh so beware, your sign sometimes doesn't always work as well as intended.
Okay, and then we're charging seventy-six cents a customer still. That's more money than what we're spending on recycling, so I'd like to spend the surplus money on the sign, it'll still be all of it. But we need to think about lowering that seventy-six cents.
Yeah, we need to lower that surcharge, absolutely.
So it just covers the.
Absolutely, I'm I'm totally with that. Any other miscellaneous business? Do you need to go to executive session? All right, thanks for coming, guys.